Kristen Chastain. Mr. Michael Cheatham is absent. Mr. Kyle Flanagan.
Here.
Mr. Jason McCray. Mr. Keith Mills.
Here.
Mr. Richard Oliver. Dr. Chrissy O'Quinn.
Here.
President Lewis Kemp.
Well performed, thank you. Move by Mr. McCray.
Second.
Thinking about hosted jurors. Any discussion? Question from the audience. All in favor?
Uh.
And opposed, motion carried. All business. Adopted minutes from September 2nd, 2025, regular meeting. Have everyone read them, please.
Some news.
Move by Dr. O'Quinn.
Second.
Thinking about Mr. McCray. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Not all in favor?
Uh.
And opposed, motion carried. New business. East Feliciana Parish 4-H Environmental Service Project. Kayla Banter, TDPW Director. Is she here? Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. State your name, please.
Good evening, members. My name is Kayla Banter. I'm the 4-H agent here at East Feliciana Parish. Thank you for having us tonight. Just wanted to meet with you all and let you know it's fantastic news. We had voted on a service project for this year, which is an environmental theme. And we met with Public Works in Michigan, Michigan Harris last Friday and voted on five roads that we would be allowing the parish to go along with us. Those top three roads are going to be cleaned over a course of six weeks in the parish. We're also wanting to weigh the trash and make it a fun little skit, I guess you would say, for everybody to see what all we can pick up and kind of like the piper's keepers maybe even. So, um, Piper's going to pass out the flyer to you all. Uh, it's going to be an easy survey that's going to be posted on Facebook, all of our social media pages, the newspaper. Uh, we're even going to get the news media to come out and maybe do some spotlighting. So I would love for you to all be there if you can. Once we get the votes in, um, October 8th is going to be the deadline to vote. We will announce it to you all and hopefully invite you to come and attend those pickup days. Uh, Public Works is going to be helping us a lot with getting supplies and support for the picker ups and trash cans and gloves. So, um, hope you can all make it and, um, if you have any questions, you can.
Any questions? Question from the audience. We really thank you. It's a good project and believe me, we will be a part of it. We will participate.
Do you have the names of those roads?
Not yet.
You don't have those yet?
What's that?
The names of the roads? You don't have those?
Yes, sir, they're on there. Um, I think it was, uh, Idowal, uh, oh, wait, I'm going to look.
Is that on here?
It's not on here.
No, it's not.
Beachum, Beachum, uh.
It was Beach Grove, Idowal, uh, Percy Drier, Scott Bar.
He said five.
Yeah, there's five. And we're going to pick the top three. But what's interesting about the survey, if you look at it, we're also going to assess behavioral information. So see how the parish is also helping us pick up trash. What are you doing on the basis on your road? You know, now Broke Road, we just cleared out some property in front of the house and there was just trash that came up, so we picked it up. So, um, we're going to get some assessment on the evaluation tonight, too.
Can you repeat those roads names again, please?
Beach Grove, Janola, Idowal, Percy Drier, Scott Bar.
Scott Bar, okay.
We're going to choose three out of the five, right?
So, um.
Three out of the five.
The.
Everyone, it'll be out for everyone to vote in the parish. It'll be on their Facebook page.
Yes, October 1st, we're going to officially release it. If y'all were paying with this bill in beforehand, I'd be happy to do it.
Well, no problem at all. Do what you want to.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, good deal. And, um, this way we can also, uh, we're just volunteers to come help us as well. I know I have some ladies behind me who do all the volunteer with 4-H. So, um, we're hoping to get some more parish involvement, maybe even challenge some of the schools to help us to get some service hours. So, um, I hope you can all join us.
We will, I promise you, I will. I'm about to rest in the jury, I will.
Yeah, we're going to do, uh, the cleanup over a six-week period, then in October and November when it's really cold, if you like.
And how are you going to put the names of the roads out?
It's in the survey. Um, Dr. Lee taken.
How, how will we know which are the top three?
Oh, I'm going to do an announcement. Yeah. And then once, that's another thing, too, once we do all of this, I'm going to come back and give you all a report so you can see a full of how they answer the demographics of the parish, where people are seeing more trash than usual. So, um, that'll be a report for you guys when we get to the parish.
Next year, we'll fix the roads down.
I know.
We, we know where all this business is going.
Well, this is the start, so.
Yeah, it's great.
And then this is something that we can start to do annually and it'd be just a part of 4-H, shit, our service projects.
Robinson said my word, say. The trash starts in kindergarten. It's got to be taught in school.
Yes.
And in 20 years, we'll get out of this.
Yeah. We're doing this right now just with our junior leaders and whoever wants to help volunteer. But DOTD does have some guidelines they want to follow and they can be under 4-H's age. So, um, we'll have other jobs for them, for our volunteers that want to help. But I appreciate your participation.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, appreciate you.
I just wanted to say, I apologize, it's not Ms. Kayla's fault. We met on Friday and we discussed the, the roads. Um, just so we can go ahead and get the project going, um, we did have a conversation and we talked about the roads. Um, we, and Idowal is there, on Idowal, they're located on Idowal.
Yes.
They're hopefully.
We're hope, we're hoping to adopt a road when this is all over. So, um, that we're responsible for, like, easily she can adopt this road. Um, so Idowal's on there, I drive that every day, so I see the tires and whatnot, so, um, the kids voted for Idowal.
And, and we're hoping with them doing this, instead of waiting till next year, maybe we can have some other organizations, the schools, firefighters, um.
Police department.
That will actually, um, the state representatives, office, I don't know.
Yeah, right there.
That will, you know, volunteer and we can do some other roads. We can do a different, um, survey, but this is kids' year project, so.
And you're going to take the whole length of Idowal? That's a long road, too.
No, I think we're going to do, um, a mile for each road. That's our, our, just to, you know, so we can, so we're not going to be out there all day on the road. About a mile, twenty-two, that's about as long. But we'll come back and we'll sit, give you a report on the evaluation that we do for the survey.
One, one foot at a time, we're going to.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Hey, thank you, yeah?
Thank you, thank you for your blessing.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Can I say something?
Please do.
I, I deal with Kayla a lot and she has done some wonderful innovative things with the 4-H program. So, I'm just bragging on her because she does a great job.
Thank you.
We're going to ask them to get out, get people out.
Yeah, yeah. She are good enough.
What if we have these taxes, we need y'all in the work.
Yes, sir, we are doing what I've been asked to do, but we are, um, we are encouraging it and we're talking about it in all the meetings and with the parents and we are being the contributors that we can, um, for you guys and for us, too. So we appreciate your support.
Yes, ma'am.
Please ask people to put their personal things aside. It's just business. We're not doing anything wrong. We just split the percentage because we got people that's against it and they don't know why they're against it.
They don't.
So, you know, we need people to get out of us.
It will be good for the parish, I promise you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's move on. Request variance to put a camper on property at 2038 Highway 957 during home bill. Ms. Stephanie Lee? Come to the mic, please. And state your name, please.
Stephanie Lee?
That's, don't worry about it, just. Um.
How long will you be?
Yeah.
Let's give her a yes, please, come back for.
Yeah.
That's usually when we give them a year and then if you need more time, come back next year and we advantage some more time.
Make that motion.
What's my Mr. Mills?
Second.
My Mr. McCray. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Not all in favor?
Uh.
And opposed, motion carried.
Good to go.
Good to go?
Thank you all for your listening.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Discuss taking action on participation agreement for national over yard settlement with Purdue. This is.
Okay, so you do have some information in your binders. It's, um, somewhat like the last settlement that you all did participate in. We just need approval for the parish to participate and we can go ahead with the, um, getting everything done. And Mr. Dequilla did, um, look at the information.
Everything good, Mr. Dillon?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Where's my Mr. Chastain? Thinking about Dr. O'Quinn. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Not all in favor?
Uh.
And opposed, motion carried. That's it. We need to, yeah. You're right, I agree with you, okay. Next on the agenda, request for transfer of property. Mr. Andy Graham and Mr. Darryl Adams.
Let me give y'all a little bit of a history on it. Um, Mr. Graham called me, uh, a couple of months ago. Andy lives in my district and, uh, he was talking about some property that they have out by the jail that they would like to swap for the property by the courthouse, the lot by the courthouse.
That would, that would, that would trip on their court. That's the property we're talking about?
Hmm.
And then Mr. Adams called me and said, "We need a place to put probation and parole." And it's like, wait a second, maybe this will work. So that's how they got here tonight.
Thank y'all for having us here. Uh, last Wednesday.
First of all, state your name, please.
State your name, Roy Darrell.
Okay.
Last Wednesday, uh, eight o'clock in the morning, I got a phone call, probation and parole was leaving us, that we're going to move them to West Baton Rouge. Um, they said because DOC had to cut seventy million dollars out of their budget, they have a seven hundred million dollar budget, ten percent. We not getting those seventy million up here and I, that I promise. Uh, but they were going to cut out the Felicianas, which is east and west and move everything to Baton Rouge. I got to calling because I had no idea, nobody's called me from probation and parole. And I called Christie, looked straight to hell. Within five minutes, I knew more about probation and parole buildings, uh, different things. And so then I went to call, I called the Secretary of DOC. Um, um, Secretary Wes Carr. Uh, he said, "Look, we're going to move the, uh, in West Police, West Baton Rouge, the, uh, probation and parole office is next to the jail." He said that they keep going up on the rent here in East Felicianas, they just go up, they go up. He says, "It's just like getting out of control." He said, "I don't know what the rent is, no idea." Um, he said that he would love to put location next to the sheriff's office and let the sheriff run it, rent would be, uh, stable. It wouldn't be just going out of control. And that's when Mr. Graham, uh, Christie, we, we got in with Mr. Graham. He said he had some property by the jail that he would love to swap for the empty lot over by the courthouse. Uh, and this is all in talks now. We've, nothing's been done. Uh, we got to get the sheriff on board, uh, talk to Jeff. I, I really don't know if he wants it or don't want it. He never said yes, never said no. But we all have to get together. Um, DOC, uh, the secretary told me that it's probably doable, but nothing's in writing. So, so nothing's been done. Uh, so we, this is our first step. We right here talking to y'all, see if y'all would even be interested in swapping the land. And if you are, I want to go to the next step. But we got to go as one. We got to be one unit when we go. I don't want to lose any jobs in East Felicianas.
I don't know.
The probation and parole, I, I don't even know how many we have, but I don't want to lose one job in East Felicianas, it means that much to me. So to keep them, we got to get together, come up with a plan and, and, and make it through city. Uh, I, in talks of maybe, uh, Jeff could put some work release inmates, you know, to have his end of the deal. But, uh, right now we just doing probation and parole and that's it. Uh, that's what we be in the building and we've worked through that. And then Mr. Graham has, uh, did you give him a fly?
Yeah, that's the name, I got that man's name.
He can tell you more about the land that he has, that he's willing to swap or, or whatever, to, to get the land by the jail for probation and parole. Uh, you, you know, and, and like, remember, this is still just in the top.
It's plenty of state.
Nothing's, nothing's being done tonight. No more than y'all saying, "Sounds good, let's, let's move forward and see where we go," you know? But nothing's being done tonight.
I, I, I have one question. If we would decide that we want to go further with this, does that mean we have to pay for it or will there be some other money somewhere?
It, it's going to be some other money somewhere and I don't know where, uh, capital outlet money, DOC, I'm going to approach him, see if he's got money that might would build it and then take the rent monthly back to pay them back. But no, that's where the money would come from.
So we don't have to put the money?
No, no. Or the sheriff, you know? All right.
State, state your name, please.
Phil Graham. Uh, I was telling Keith that some of you were on the jury when I used to do financial consulting and, uh, and I also.
That's some years ago.
Y'all are getting old.
Guess who called my name, thank you.
He was on first one's name, bro.
I know.
But this is my son, Andy, and Andy's been, he does a lot of legwork and I will tell you that Andy's mother thinks he's great, so. Uh, what I've given you here is to kind of give you an idea of, uh, what property is there and, uh, you know, obviously our objective is that we, we do want to sell the property. And if you look at that sheet behind that little memo right there, this is the property that, uh, that we have. And it's, I guess you could go to the, the little survey plaque behind that, which shows there's about eight point three six acres in the whole piece. But what I've identified is Track A is just north of the jail property. And, uh, that, and that track, come here, and what was that?
That, that was two point nine.
Okay, so there's about two point nine acres in that. And the, the proposal or what we would like for you to consider would be, okay, we would give you Track A and, uh, with a right away in there, which is about, I think, twenty-four feet wide. And you look at the last page, that's y'all's property, that's the back half of the lot that y'all have up there by the, uh, by the old probation and parole. The DA has a little office there.
Right.
And so, obviously, if, if it ends up passed, we would like to, uh, get that back half of the lot and in exchange for that, uh, two point nine acres there. And, uh, you know, but if that didn't work out, you know, we would consider selling, uh, the property as well and however much you, you need it. Uh, that, the, the track there that's identified is Track B. That's right behind the current probation and parole office. Couple of notes there is, you'll see is it's not here available, but that Parish White Fire District owns that little strip from Plank Road that goes back and then the school board owns the other part. And the reason I'm making that observation is that if y'all took, said, "Okay, well, maybe we don't want Track A, we'll take Track B," be it a trade or buy or however you wanted to do it, then you might have an access to get a right away coming straight off of Plank Road into that track. And, uh, if you did Track A, then you would just go and there would be a street or a driveway going back to Track A. I, now, we've rented, uh, the probation and parole before in my dad's old building up there on the courthouse and, uh, so I have a little knowledge about probation and parole. They do like to be close to the jail and, and I think they, ideal situation in West Baton Rouge, they're right there. And so, uh, and Roy Darrell's correct, you know, there's obviously nothing decided, but one of these options, we would, I mean, obviously, we would like to exchange for that, that back of that lot up there. Uh, the reason is that we own the lot, uh, that's in, that's to the south of that, uh, Highway 10. So that would make us, we would have a bigger lot there. And, uh, we, and look, I've got a couple of options. Number one, in exchange, wouldn't cost you anything. Uh, as, as Roy Darrell said, we've got some steps we need to take if it moves forward, be it appraisals or evaluations or whatever. Uh, also, we would be, we would consider if you wanted to buy some of it, we would consider financing it. And, uh, I think we could make it very favorable, uh, offer there to, to maybe see if we could make this thing work. But I, I clearly understand, you know, there's still more steps to take and we would certainly appreciate if y'all would consider that. Any questions?
Thirty years ago, when I got on this jury, I had a pipe dream that I can build a governmental, put, for here, for all, for all government, anything on that corner.
Right.
But it's not, it's a pipe dream, it never happened.
Right. Well, it's just like.
I wanted to build a complex there, but.
Yeah. And, and it's, it's also the, the, uh, you know, at, there's some point in time, obviously, I don't know that it's going to be within ten, twenty, thirty, forty years, but the jail is probably going to need to be expanded. And that jail you have now, I don't want to tell, I hate to tell you this because I was working for the jury then, I think that was a federal grant that got that jail.
In nineteen eighty-eight.
Early.
Nineteen eighty-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so it would be, obviously, and we would, I'd love to say the whole piece of property. And, uh, and as a matter of fact, I went ahead and made out a deposit ticket when I came over to get this. So, uh, but are there any questions? Any, anything else?
What's the pledge of duty? Go, go, the pledge of duty?
Go ahead and go for it.
Yeah, I'd say.
Do y'all need to see what's this?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Legal.
We're all going to exchange the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me look into that a little bit more. There's finance parts could be a little bit difficult on that part, but I'll look into that and let you know about it next week. Is it a time?
A time on it?
No, I don't think.
Not, not that I can tell you, but just more, right, while probation and parole's talking, more of the, you know, they, they got open here right now. And, and my last comment would be, we need to do something, I, because this year, uh, I got a text Wednesday night from the secretary that we're good. They're not going to move the probation office out of Clinton, Louisiana. But they're going to keep looking at it. We need to be moving forward because the people on probation and parole, they can't drive to West Baton Rouge. So now we're going to have our jail packed again, full of people, because they can't get there. They have a hard enough time getting up here to Clinton. So just, we, we just need to be moving, thinking about it and I appreciate your decision.
I'd like to say, Roy, back via the last administration, we had this opportunity, but nobody wanted to talk about it. So it's, we would already be working at to get a boot down.
I think no one from probation and parole, um, actually.
Rest up to the jury.
Yeah. Never did hear nothing from them.
But they talk this land right here, that's on probation and parole, right?
He's not relevant to this.
And I.
I think that next to jail would be a really good idea.
I want to be proactive.
I'm for this, make something happen.
I agree.
So what's the pledge of duty, Jerry?
I'd say we look at, let Sam look at it and, and move forward with it.
He said about our next meeting would be the first meeting in October.
Yeah.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, a motion, I said.
Yeah, motion second. She made the motion. Yeah, under about, yeah, my second.
And more discussion. Question from the audience. Yes, sir.
Thank y'all, appreciate it. If you have any questions, you can get in touch with Andy, uh, and, uh, he, I hate to say it, but he's doing most of the work, but, uh.
Good seeing you, Mr. Field.
Good seeing y'all. Thank you very much.
Okay. I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Uh.
And opposed, motion carried. Okay. Announcement of intent to call the election. Mr. Trip, Ms. Connie? State your name, please.
Yeah, I have it. I can read it. Okay.
This is just, um, Trevor Collins of all of the regional library. This is just the announcement, the notice, uh, to, that we would like to call the election.
Would it be in April?
April 18th. And, um, again, it'll, it'll be the same amount. Uh, it's just the only difference is it's a rededication, which would add to our capital in the village, which would allow us, if we ever got the footing to do so, to build a small ranch, maybe someplace like Swallow or something like that. That's all I'm gonna do.
That would be dedication coming quite a bit, though. I really, and I think it's a good thing, really.
Notice is hereby given that it's meeting to be held on Monday, October 20th, 2025 at 6:00 PM at its regular meeting place, the East Feliciana Parish Police Jury Meeting Room, 12064 Marston Street, Clinton, Louisiana. The police jury of the parish of East Feliciana, State of Louisiana, plans to consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling an election to be held in the parish of East Feliciana, State of Louisiana, to authorize the levy of an ad valorem tax variant.
And that's the end here.
Is that a Saturday? Did you say the 20th? September 20th or?
No, October, October 20th.
October 20th. Your meeting on October 20th, you'll have a, um, a resolution.
Yeah, to call for that, yeah. Okay. Information, no, no action needed to be taken. I'm going to come back to six and seven, because they're going to have a session on those two, okay? I want committee and staff prepared. In that committee, I have two items. First of all, I wish everyone would get out there and support this rededication for the parish. We need to get this passed. Hope everybody will vote yes. And to the jurors, on October 15th, the Regional Six Police Jurors Association meeting will be held in Springfield. You need to make reservations if you all want to go.
What does that say again, Springfield?
October 15th, it's Springfield. That's the Regional Six Police Jury.
Yeah, Region Six.
I mean, Springfield, Louisiana. So give it, Ms. Harris, if you're registered, if you're planning on going. Myself and Connie already registered.
I'm automatically registered, I can do all of it.
Yeah, we want you to register, to bring a guest, too.
Well, we just need to let your mission out?
Yeah.
An email was sent out last week by Mariana to all of the jurors. If you, um, plan to attend, she's been getting everyone registered.
So we need to respond to the email.
By October 1st. You can't bring up a guest.
You can't do it, I heard.
She's doing it.
She's doing it.
She's doing it. Brianna, who sent you the email?
I was student, I was student worker.
Would you like me to ask her to register you instead of your client in the email?
Yeah, obviously, that was, that, that was a statement.
Well, you know you opened the door for that.
Yemisha, register me too. Register me too. Register me too.
Just you?
No, we didn't want.
What about your death sentence going?
Uh, what does it say, October fifteenth?
October fifteenth. At Springfield.
Location again?
Springfield.
There's a little, um.
That's over by, um, Hammond, Hammond, that area over there.
There's also, um, on the last two pages.
Okay, that's all I have, that's information on it. Okay. Personnel committee, Dr. Chris O'Quinn.
Okay, um, we did meet, we discussed the vehicle use policy. Um, we're kinda going through a lot of the different policies. You'll see on that one, um, that where it's in yellow, those are the changes, basically. Before approving a driver and annually thereafter, we had the before approving a driver, that we recheck the employee's driving record, but we put a time on it annually. Uh, go down to number two, all drivers of police jury owned vehicles shall meet the driver required, criteria requirements, so no DWI's, things like that. Um, go to page number, page two, number five, all drivers of police jury owned vehicles shall follow IRS guidelines for personal commuting use of police jury vehicles. And that is pretty much spelled out in the IRS document. So those are major changes of.
Proposed.
And I'll say on section six, there's a little bit of redundancy that might need to be cleaned up a little bit. It references the same issues multiple times, if you read it, so.
Employees are never permitted to operate a company vehicle or a personal vehicle for company business under the following conditions. Any physical or mental impairment that makes driving unsafe, consumption or influence of alcohol, illegal drugs, or prescription medication that impairs driving ability, any temporary impairment illness or intoxication that prevents safe and legal vehicle operation. And the redundancy is.
Just that it repeats itself, uh, in other words, about the impairment over and over and over again. It's basically saying, it's basically saying the same thing.
One is physical and mental impairment, one is temporary, which could be different. So we'll cover our bases on everything. I think that was the point, was to try to cover the bases. I don't know what it hurts, but. So, um, that was our recommendation. We are going to, um, review next the GPS policy, 'cause all of our vehicles have GPS. And we're going to come up with a policy. We've looked at some from other areas, and we just haven't decided exactly what it is.
We had a policy to play with GPS. No juror have authority to monitor no employee. No juror, only the supervisor or parish manager.
That's exactly right.
Go to the parish manager, she will review the GPS.
Yeah, no.
No juror should have anything on his phone or on his computer.
Nope.
We cannot micromanage employees like that, nobody. No, we can't, no, we can't.
No.
And we discussed that Yemisha would do a certain.
Yeah.
We had juror, we had juror wanting to put on their, on their computer, on their phone, to monitor the movement of our employees.
Not this jury.
That's not, that's not our job.
This jury didn't have that.
No. We're not gonna have it.
I don't want it.
We don't want anything. And all our vehicles have GPS on, every, every juror has a GPS on. We made that mandate years ago.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Miss Harris.
So we need a motion?
Well, that was a motion, if not, I'll make the motion. You make the motion? Yeah.
And more discussion? Okay, let's move on. All in favor?
Aha.
In a poll, motion kill.
That's it, district.
Okay, let's move on. Finances committee, Mr. Kyle.
I have one item, uh, just to approve monthly invoices.
Seconded.
Discussion, question for the audience. All in favor?
Aha.
In a poll? Anything else for Mr. Kennedy?
No, sir.
Move on.
Well, yes, we have a meeting this week, but it's, uh, Thursday, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, public working equipment, Mr. Dexter McCray.
I don't have anything, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Building property, Mr. Dexter, Dexter Osteen. You got it right this time, not Dexter McCray.
Yes, I got you. Yes, sir, Mr. President, uh, I do have one thing, um, over at the park, we were, there was a, um, um, concrete foundation that was already existing. And so what we did, we put a shed pavilion that went up, and it came out very nice. So instead of three shed pavilions, there are four over there now, and that funding came from the ARPA fund.
In Mac, MacManus?
Yeah, in MacManus, that's correct. I should've said in MacManus. Oh, it's very nice. I stopped by today to take a look at it. Uh, they used some six by six posts on the corners and embedded in concrete and topped off with the, um, with the top saw. And it's open and it's very nice, and it just, you know, the thing was made out of all treated wood, two by sixes and some two by fours, and company that did it provided it the tin. And it came in well under the, the bidding process, you know, so we, we got a, a good deal on it, so.
And they did meet with the town of Clinton, with the mayor, about the Clinton Park over here.
Okay, okay.
He said, we're doing such a good job with the park, they want to return Clinton Park back to the police jury.
Hmm, yes, indeed. Okay, I have to.
He said, you don't have the, the manpower to pull it to maintain that park.
Okay, okay.
So you scheduled a meeting.
Okay, yes, sir, Mr. President, got you. All right, that's, uh, that's all I have concerning, uh, first, the building properties at this time, Mr. President.
Any question for Mr. Osteen? I'm not gonna move on. Okay, Minnesota amount of the treasury report.
Okay, um, Mr. Lewis mentioned to you all the, the Region Six registration. Just let us know, myself or Brianna, if you need to be registered. The information is in your packets. There's also, also information in your packets on prevention on the go. That's something that we've been doing annually. It's breast and colorectal cancer screening. Um, there's also a flyer outside, but we've been doing that at the health unit, um, every year, having Mary Bird and Woman's Hospital to come out, we've been partnering with them. So the date for that is October twenty-eighth, that's on a Tuesday. Um, I did, also sent out an email to the parish manager applicants as directed, so everyone should have received an email. And, um, personnel committee did meet and did discuss the organizational chart. And did decide at this point, no revisions need to be made to the organizational chart. Um, and we're also working, Mr. Kyle is gonna have a meeting this week, so we're working with the financial advisors to provide the information that they said they would have for you all with the new system, um, for October. And also in November, we're planning on having everything done so we can go ahead and transfer to the new payroll system. Have any questions?
Anything else for Sarah? Anything else from Sarah?
That's it.
Okay. Okay. Homeland Security.
Sean Smith, OSEP. Um, the only thing, uh, Mr. Earl wanted me to pass along was, uh, it's real dry. We don't get rain soon, we might be recommended a burn ban. I do believe Saint Helena to.
Tegel Hall.
Yeah, that's it, and Washington Parish are all in, uh, burn bans now, so. And there's no hurricane impacts within the next seven days. There's one floating out there off the coast of Africa, too.
While we're discussing dry, dry news, I got a phone call from the mayor about the courthouse. We need to go and start the sprinkling system at the courthouse, grass is dying. Just give a tear and sort of water and run at the courthouse. It's pretty dry down. Okay, anything else? Planning zoning, they meet the, they meet the fourth, third, public comment? Public comment? If not, you can move on with the gun. Oh, go ahead.
On the election coming up in October, the talk in my story is, the ballot makes it seem like it's a new tax. And it's not a new tax. I, I wish y'all would tell and, and emphasize that to everybody.
We did.
Uh, I mean, I'm telling them that, I'm for you, I'm voting yes, but whoever wrote it just, they dropped the ball on me. You know? I ain't looked at, I ain't looked at my vote ballot, but my wife read it to me and it's just.
Another, another thing came with our last meeting that really hurt us a lot, what an individual said.
Yeah.
I want people to understand, we're not misappropriating any funds in this jury.
Yeah.
Everything is above board. And I put a bad, bad out on our proposition. I want people to understand, I don't know why he made that statement, but it wasn't a good statement to make at that time. But we are done, everything above board, we're being very transparent, we're not doing anything wrong, my mismanaging money. If, if he can prove it, bring it on, brother, I don't have to tell him.
And, and remember, November, I need y'all's application, capital outlay money. I'd love to get one from East Feliciano, the police jury.
You'll have one.
We, we got the sheriff one point one million the last day of session. So the money's there, I just gotta have some paperwork. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Darren, I think James Mitten was, was gonna put something out too.
He did, he put something in the last.
Yeah, he put something in the last paper, but, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause they worded it real bad.
It worded real bad. And more public comment? I'm not getting a motion?
Yes, I have one.
Go ahead.
Uh, before, I just wanna thank the, uh, them, the staff here and the office and all the Department of Public Works for the condolences and every, uh, the prayers they gave me for the death of my brother. So again, I just wanna say thanks, not on them, but everybody that's here that sent out prayers, I really appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, you have a motion now to go to the dead of the session for thirty minutes?
Seven.
That can cool out.
I guess it matters.
Couldn't.
But I don't send them the stuff from treasury? That ain't, that's not on?
But that's cheap, that's capped out for different money. That money's dumb.
Yeah, everyone's all that you go through. That's the way I'm saying you do. You ask the prosecutor, you book, didn't that be worth it? Can you get some fines? That's the way you do it. That's the way I'm saying you do it. You ask the prosecutor, you book, didn't that be worth it? Can you get some fines? And I think it's the same type of work, it's just.
I got, there's all of my.
I didn't do that, no.
I know somebody that's gonna be calling. How late? No. Thanks, me. Now, have a good. Maybe a year old boss.
We call them. Still working, but, um, I'm still.
You work for free, you volunteer hours.
You got to give them all part time, so. Oh, you, I paid five dollars a night, you should do that.
And my dog said he wanna see you again. You ever gonna have? Which one was it? Big Canada's hard. No, all I see was dog. And you pulled up and just honked the horn? No, I, I, I ain't opened the door, I didn't really get out. And you come around, you come around the corner, see he stood there, and I put my foot back here. I closed the door, I didn't make no sudden move, I didn't break the camera.